Diane?
Yeah.
So we're gonna open this one board meeting and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's say that. We'll do a what? Right. So. Need a motion to sign the warrants?
So moved.
Oh, so I can have.
All in favor? Oh.
She's not on the meeting yet, so if you want to do the warrants.
Oh, okay. Yeah, here. I'm just gonna have to get out and go into assessors when she shows up by zoom. Do we have the paperwork to go with that? Is it in practice? Because I'm more used to Jim bringing it, you know. Pretending to get yours. I'll also take a motion to approve the minutes of April 12 meeting.
So moved.
Oh.
Second.
Nancy, thanks. All in favor? So we have no old business. We're waiting for Jackie. Yes. Waiting for Jackie to zoom in to do the assessors meeting, so we'll go to Frank Stockside Restaurant. Look who we know. I wanted to.
Hi.
I think we usually just ask, have you changed anything? Any like amounts, more people, or less than?
No changes from last year.
I will make a motion to approve for a little second.
Is there any? All in favor?
Yeah, but this is black.
Yeah, that blue pen.
This is blue.
Oh, I wouldn't.
Oh, is this it?
Yeah.
Are you charged blue ink?
This one is. Yeah. That's why I went to black, because everybody else was black and I was blue.
Yeah, that's black.
You got the little sign here.
Okay.
Yep.
We have to sign and we have to put a print and put our title. This is. Let me just pass that through. So should we, shouldn't we have everyone like make copies of all that? Is this critical that we get this out right now? Can we get it in the morning? Do you need us to make a copy right now?
Tomorrow's time. Is that true?
So that's, so that's actually here, she said she's doing. Just waiting for the national signature. Like pull down the homepage. And send them over.
Sure.
Well, we have Alice Henry.
And that's all it says.
It's all it says, okay.
I know, because this is a surprise.
I'm just gonna stand over here so I can kinda.
Okay.
So everyone, I'm just here to talk about the fluoride in the town water. I miss the town.
They'll be on the camera.
Oh, there we go. Right, so a little brief history of what I'm talking about. You may be familiar, and Renee has passed out a paper. In 1971, the town of Quebec voted in, voted to have fluoride added to the municipal water supply. Okay. So that's about 52 years ago, and, you know, I could stand here and talk about, you know, my opinion of fluoride for quite a while, but what I wanna do is just address the reason I think it warrants having it come back up for town review this year. So what I wanna do is kinda walk through this pamphlet I handed out, and I'll be quick around that. There's a few reasons I think that, you know, it warrants being reviewed again by the town. The first one is that there is a precedent for it in the state of Maine. So back in the late 60s, early 70s, probably 150 municipalities voted in fluoride at the time. Starting in 2007, probably had 12 municipalities that have voted to remove it. And so I put an article here and see Kanabunk, Kanabunk Port Wells, Agonquit, Arundel, parts of Denver, all recently voted to remove it from the town water. So there is a precedent in the state for towns doing this. The next thing I wanted to.
What's the matter with my break? Too much toxic fluoride?
What's that?
That's what's the matter with my break.
I don't think so. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. The next thing you'll see here, fluoride cost for the town of Quebec. So I met with the Water District Board at their board meeting two weeks ago to discuss this with them first before I came here. So I got some numbers from them, cost, you know, projections and such. So nine years ago, 10 years ago, we were paying about a dollar a pound. So around $50 for a 50-pound bag of fluoride. And you can see what that looks like further in the pamphlet, there's a picture there. $50 a bag. Today, we're paying $745 a pound, which comes to $372 a bag. And we have gone, and this is according to the workers down at the department, from adding one bag of fluoride initially, we're up to almost two bags, 50-pound bags per month into the water supply. So what was a $50 cost 10 years ago per month for the fluoride is now 651 or greater. You know, I kinda low-balled it a little bit there. So in less than 10 years, for the rate payers, and, you know, by extension, the taxpayers, because the municipality, the municipal buildings are on water, and the school and such, has gone up over 1,300 percent in cost. So that's sort of the second reason I think it warrants another look at for, you know, people concerned with that price hike.
Well, and it's adequate also.
Okay, that's where I'm, that's where I'm going with this.
That's what we wanna know.
Yeah, so.
What's the downside of the fluoride?
Yeah, okay, so then there's that, the health, the detrimental health effects, right? And there's a lot of controversy and debate about this. So I've put in a flyer here from fluoridealert.org. They're a good resource for states like Maine, small municipalities going to for resources and information. So fluoride in the drinking water. Fluoride occurs naturally and is in some drinking supplies naturally. What we are adding in is a synthetic byproduct from a chemical extraction process in China. And so the byproduct of this chemical extraction process to make other things is a synthetic fluoride. They bag this up and sell it, and that's what we add into our water. It is not a food-grade fluoride or pharmaceutical-grade fluoride. And even if it were, fluoride is noted as a neurotoxin, right? So.
It's banned in all of England.
It's banned in many European countries, many states have banned it as well.
It's sort of mental retardant.
Yeah, so there are studies linking it to decrease in IQ, calcification of your pineal gland, higher risks of ADHD. And, you know, so there is an argument that fluoride does have an effect to reduce.
Now I can't hear.
Tooth decay.
Tooth decay. And I won't argue against whatever that number is. You know, they claim it's 20 percent, other people claim it's 10 percent or closer to zero as a reduction. And on the second page, you'll see a chart here. It shows unfluorinated countries and fluorinated countries, and the rate of tooth decay.
Yeah.
Reduction over time. It's not necessarily linked to fluoride, but even if, you know, it conceives that it does a 20 percent reduction, it doesn't warrant that, the health, the cons, right?
I think you got me when you said it came from China.
Yeah.
And it was not a natural.
I actually read up on it.
Yeah.
It's quite a dangerous chemical.
It is, and you'll see the picture there on one of, the front of back, I'm not sure. It has skull, skull on, and crossbones.
Yeah, yeah.
They can't touch it with their bare hands and have to wear protective equipment down it though.
Can't breathe it either.
Yeah, and then you'll see the safety handout that is associated with this particular fluoride. This comes along with that product.
How many parts?
I don't really know what I'm talking about. Parts per million.
.07 to .09 parts per million is what the state.
Is that million or billion?
Oh, geez, it could be billion, John. I'm not sure, but it's a standard measurement, whichever that it is, if it's million or billion.
And we sit there as far as our water company reports? We stay at that level as far as our water?
Yeah, well, we were, the end of the line was, they were having trouble, they measure at the end of the line, and those numbers weren't coming up high enough, so the state requested recently that they increase the amount of fluoride that's being put in.
And so how, do we know the answer to how we go about stopping to put it in?
Well, so I met with the board.
Is it not?
Well, that's kinda what I was thinking. We're separate from the water boards, its own.
Right, that's why I don't.
Their own thing.
So I met with them, and they thought it would, should be on a town vote because it's not just the rate payers that are paying it, but the taxpayers indirectly by, because the municipality is experiencing the price hikes for the water as well as the school department.
So they suggested it go in the warrant in the town meeting?
They suggested it go on the warrant for the town meeting available to all.
We put it on, or you bring a petition.
Yeah, so that was, they asked me to communicate that to you, and they said they were behind, as the board, the Water District Board, they were behind this.
They were behind having the town can decide?
Yeah.
And then who, what the town decides?
All three members were behind.
I think so. I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion and we put a warrant into this year's annual article looking to terminate putting fluoride into our water.
I will second that.
Yes, all in favor?
You know, as an interesting side comment to this whole thing, is that here we are in America trying to reduce cavities in our children's teeth by adding fluoride. And on the other hand, we give them pop, soda, fruit drinks, and it's rotting their teeth out.
Yeah.
It's just rotting them out.
There's enough.
Have you read the report from the nurse who was in South America where Coca-Cola built a factory?
No.
She noticed over a period of time, all the children used to have wonderful teeth, and then after they had started drinking free cokes and everything, it was rotting out of their heads.
Yeah. So that's, that's the argument, is there's enough dental hygiene available that we don't need to be putting it into the water? If that's the only reason.
As soon as it's set, though, you can lead a horse to water.
Yeah.
But when you look at the history of it, when it originally was put in, it probably made sense.
Sure.
Fluoride.
I mean, that's anything from China sounds bad.
You know, we're using a non-food warranted.
Exactly.
Toxic.
And they have to wear gloves to touch it.
No sense to me to put that in the water.
And so Dallas pointed out that it needed to be the same language as the question that was voted on in '71, so Renee has provided.
Oh, okay. Exactly, yes, I just.
If that's accurate, I don't know.
This might be authorized to.
Other facts in that.
To, so instead, just change add to remove and make it exactly the same article.
I think so. I think you all heard your sound. Oh, go.
I just had a question, Alex. I didn't know what it was referring to on the agenda, but I knew Renee had worked and given the board to put it on. It was going to be important, but I think it's really worthwhile before a town meeting that there's an open discussion, because there are so many pros and cons. I was brought up on fluoride fluoridation, and it never did anything for my teeth because I have all these little fishes in my teeth that I got cavities. But there are preventative measures, you can go to a dentist, and it's localized. You're not like consuming it. But it's, it's so bad in Quebec that we have a filter on our water system that will filter out the fluoride because I, I was just tasting it, and I could smell it when I, in the shower. But I think it would be a good idea if you could have an open discussion for people. One, they become more knowledgeable, and they don't have to be afraid of a change, and I think they're going to be more likely to support it. So I'm just saying, even if you just say, I'm here for an open session, I have children, I've looked, I've done the research, and I just want you to know, this isn't anti-children or dental care.
Right.
I mean, I prefer that we put that much money into, you know, helping having more dental care at the school or, you know, just general.
It would be much better spent on something like that.
And it'd be actually directly involved, so that's just, I'd like the board to support, you know, that we could be an informed people here.
Does this have to have a, be a, have a public here prior to a meeting?
No.
But you could schedule that, right?
You might wanna be available to talk at the meeting when people ask, or you might, you know. I think you should chair the meeting, and I think you also should be at the school. Oh, you, I'm just talking at the town meeting, there might be questions about the warrants question. Prior to that, you know, I'm not opposed to doing an open house, and maybe.
But, yeah.
I don't think we need.
They are at the, at the town meeting for that.
Right. But also, if workers could come and discuss the issue about how they had to handle it with gloves, I mean, if the fact was serious, you know.
I didn't hear.
Dallas Hallman came with a jar of the stuff to see the handle.
If you research. I'd like one question from you.
It is, it is.
Did I hear you correctly say that it costs the town, or costs the taxpayers, or the rate payers, $651 per month?
Yes.
Presently?
That's, that's, that's approximated.
For how much a week or a month?
A month.
Okay.
And that's because of the.
So that buys a lot of dollars.
That's something to tell you.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Yeah, $6,000, $7,000, you get a shirt. Well, if it's 600 a month, you have 12 months, you got 10, so you're talking about $7,000, $8,000.
It could be, it could be better spent.
Yep, absolutely.
I have a quick question, too. We were saying that people, that they were having trouble getting enough fluoride at the end of the line, so they tested at the end, and it's not enough, so they upped it. What about the people at the beginning of the line? Are they getting way too much?
That's what, that's what I said, I could talk for hours about it, because, yeah, you're, you don't wanna be at the head of that, you're getting a higher concentration, and so it's rated for an adult to drink so much water, it gives you the appropriate amount of fluoride. But if you're drinking a lot of water, and you're right there at the head, you're getting much more of that than, than is rated for, so.
Thank you for researching, Alex.
Yes, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Good job.
Wanda Reed. Celebration Committee.
Oh, one of those.
Oh, sorry, Jackie.
You wanna open the assessors meeting?
We gotta close the select board meeting temporarily and open the assessor meeting. So we need a motion to close.
So.
All, all in favor? So you're on, Jackie.
Yeah, unmute yourself.
Have you muted her? She's not saying anything.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, that's very rare, you'll figure out, and me not saying anything, it's very, very rare. So your smart little buddy Suzette figured out that she, they, she had $440, and I think it was three cents credit. And I don't know how she figured it out, but she figured it out that in 2021, when you guys bought the Red House, it was after April 1st. So when they did the closing, they collected the taxes, they collected some taxes, $440 and three cents, from the previous owners. And then when the bills went out, because it was owned by the town at that point, so a bill wasn't sent out. So she wanted me to put in a supplemental to balance out that $440 to, for, for the taxes that would have been taxed during that next tax period, if that makes sense. So it's, it's really the, it's really the taxes from the person who owned the Red House before you guys bought it for that year, part of that, for, for their part of that year. How's that? Is that, is that playing it?
And Jackie, does that go back into the town copper?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're not gonna get a credit or anything.
No, that goes because we.
They're not gonna get the money, the money's just going to go back into surplus in, in the town's credit.
That's not right, is it, completely? Isn't there a credit on the account, but there's no tax to apply it to? Okay, so, so the money has come into the account, but there's no tax there to apply it to? So that's why there's a supplemental?
Okay, so then it's gonna balance out.
Right.
It'll take the zero. So I make a motion that we sign the supplement. All in favor? Thank you, Jackie. How's everything going?
Oh, it's going good. Today, I was doing a bunch of the last year's real estate sales and, and, and getting ready to mark them all on the maps I have to compare them to what I have for values, to show me what I have to do to get the values up so they're in line with, to some degree with the sales. I don't wanna be overly aggressive, but I have to be aggressive enough to get us up in the 90 to 100 percentile. So that's what I'm starting to look at right now, and a lot of stuff sold for a lot of money, and that's all I can say.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Well, I guess.
They're gonna keep on coming, Jackie.
The lower range, she divided amongst people.
So that's where I am now, and, and in the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna be looking at the tax exempt applications, and then sometime, hopefully sometime in May, I'm gonna try to schedule it so I can come down and visit with you guys in person and talk to you about a few of these things, okay?
Excellent. Okay, well, looking forward to it, Jackie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, see you later.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
So make a motion to come out of, back into this one board meeting. Second, all in favor? Now, Wanda.
Yeah, Miss Diane. Hello. I'm Anne, and I'm on the Celebration Committee of the Town of Quebec, the treasurer. And back in August 8th of last year, a check was cut for the town, from the Celebration Committee, to a man that was called, his business was called Mainly Woods. And we voted on the Celebration Committee for him to do two sets of cornhole boards for us. He said he would be glad to do it. Suzette took the check, and it went to him. Then we got a letter in October from him, a note, that he talked to Diane, and he said that he wasn't able to do those because he couldn't get the product, the supply, for making those cornhole boards. He had a lot ahead of us, and he couldn't get the supplies. And he was told to send the check back that he had cashed to the Celebration Committee through the town of Quebec, and he never did.
How much was it for?
It was for $500. He cashed it right after he got it on August 4th. This note that he talked to Diane with was on October the 22nd. Suzette has sent him a letter, a regular mail letter stating, we'd like to have our funds back. He never replied. I called his cell phone, it's disconnected.
I think we called veto in Detroit.
So that, that's a lot of hot dogs and a lot of cotton candy for $500.
Well, exactly, who knew? How did we find this person to do this in Maine?
You were on the, Diane.
Did somebody know, somebody, did somebody know how to get ahold of him?
Well, she, she did, tried to.
We tried.
But he was somebody that was doing a lot in our whole area, really, and he had, you know, a good rep, he was solid, as far as we knew, and so now, we're, we're trying to figure out, what do we do? What can the town pursue or?
Well, you have, you have small claims court, you have to know where they are, and you have to be able to serve them and edit it.
You should send them a certified letter.
That's what I was thinking.
From the town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Send them a certified letter.
And then go from there.
Yeah, I think so.
I think we'd also like to seek your approval that if there isn't a response to that, we could use that as an exhibit for a small claims court.
Exactly.
And we'd like to have your backing to take it to small claims court. We, we believe, we wanted to do local business, he's in, in the area.
He's in Pembroke.
In Pembroke. And people from the town have used him privately, but I don't know if he got in over his head, but we can't do this with municipal funds.
You can't do it in a small town.
Well, let's send them a certified letter. Do we need a vote on that?
So I wonder, I mean, you can't, if he doesn't have it, you're not gonna get it, no matter what you do.
What would be our ad hoc cause if they're returning?
It's not necessary, you're working with small claims court.
Let's give a certified letter for.
Yeah.
And let the lawyer present, that's ammunition.
I'd be glad to help you with that. I took a municipal prosecution court, so. Small claims court has a fee, and that, that's all you do.
So yeah, I would do a motion for a minute.
I'll make a motion, we send them a certified letter.
Second, all in favor? Start with that.
I just wanted to ask, we could also send a priority mail, because then we'll, with tracking, then we'll know he got it, too.
Sure.
Some people won't sign for certified or registered, but we can then track that he got it as resident, so if you had to change, we can get a record.
Sure.
Thank you. Do you have an address?
Yes, I do. Yes.
Well, that's good. Where, what town is he living?
Pembroke.
Pembroke.
Route 1.
We wanna thank the town staff, especially Suzette and Renee for really helping us with the recovery on this endeavor.
I mean, we gotta go step by step, and that's the next step.
And we have.
And we waited.
He's still around, because I contacted local people that have dealt with it. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. And I have another thing I'd like to talk about. We'd like to know if the board would accept us to have a fund listed under Celebration Supplies instead of like, we had one for 4th of July, Pirate Invasion, all these other ones, where we could order supplies that we need out of that fund instead of going into the individual itemized.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Ink for the printer, doing all this stuff. But we have to get permission to have that.
Right, even if it was.
That's another line.
Yeah, but I mean, run it by you guys so that you're in the loop, not just go.
Well, no, but it's accounting.
Yeah.
It's another accounting line.
Run a little of those, that's different, you just enter the numbers and keep on going.
So would it just be under the Celebration Committee that you have?
Be like the G fund, like the Christmas fund, and Pirate Invasion Festival, it would just be G one that.
It'll say Celebration Supplies?
And they would come out of there, and it would come out of either the Christmas or the July 4th fund or something like that?
Whatever they wanna put into the supplies, if they raise a supply, they put in a specific fund.
They tell you what fund to put in.
Well, like, we would like to get a barbecue grill, buy one, they have a lot of devices that could place to have at our celebrations that we have around town.
Oh, God, next year, want us swimming pool.
Yeah, definitely gonna put it.
That's the rest of the pool.
Okay, what about the flooring? What about flooring?
So I think that's it. Well, we just, we wanted to ask, what, one thing we're doing now is the, well, with the veterans, with the lead attendants, historical, but like right now, we just had a fundraiser before Easter, we raised $500. But we'd like to get things like for the Memorial Day Fund, out of that money, whatever, you know, we have to get out of that, and the, you know, our everything's progressing real well, like scheduled for the 4th. And one more thing, we wanna know if we can borrow your table.
We did before, and.
Oh, do they?
Fun back.
Of course.
Sure.
The fold-up ones.
Any one we can.
That one will be hard, because it doesn't collapse.
I won't be able to move that one.
The folding tables, we should be.
Sure, of course. So we'll make a motion that we, we will make a separate line for Celebration Supplies.
That was a motion, right?
Yes, the motion, second.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work. It's really great to have a party.
You guys are doing a fantastic.
Never wanna say no to a party.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, you know, when is it now on our fireworks? Where are we at with that?
Sunday.
July 2nd.
Is it July 2nd?
July 2nd.
So we'll have Rory Jones with lamps, and he won't be in town.
Yep, that's good.
And they'll have fireworks, so that should be good for our.
I think the 5th is the rain date.
Well, maybe they'll open for those days.
So hopefully it's the 2nd.
Yes.
Kevin, do we have a little, hopefully a happy update? I don't know, CEO probably isn't a happy thing.
Very little. Package.
We have. We have, um, successful update anyway.
Well, out of the list that, to start off with, what it is, is the dangerous building notifications. I was asked to review what Gary had done, slide four and that. And what I found is that there was four on the list that have actually either been removed or improved. There's one that's currently in the process of having stuff done. The rest of them are still there as, there's one that is questionable because I don't know what the original building was, the one, the trailer that's there. While it looks old and run down, it looks like it's still usable. But I'm not sure because I don't have anything to build by other than map and lot number. That's how things was, were recorded. What I did is, I went out to each one that was on the list.
Are these all the ones that we get?
Those were all the ones that are on that list. Was there a copy of the list, Renee?
Yep, it's, it's the very beginning. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the pictures there.
And then I labeled the pictures to go with them.
Oh, the paper. There you go. Okay. So, on each one, do you have a, sort of a classification on each one? Did you, did you have a level or a certain classification? Rating, rating of each one, like worst case?
Basically, it's either dangerous or not dangerous.
Okay.
And the one that I had questions about was, it's Victoria Castella, map seven lot nineteen one. It's the trailer. And that one, I don't know.
You have a question mark. The rest of them, so if you were to just to look at the list, who, what, on which?
Those are all the ones that are dangerous.
Everything on this list, you consider dangerous?
Is it about the same rate of danger?
And I'm assuming that the one is occupied.
Yes.
Suzette has.
The other one's.
All the others, all the others are not occupied?
Correct. They, or they don't appear to be.
Okay.
That's one of the other issues also statewide is that people will go into these types of abandoned buildings and.
Squat.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether they're transient people coming in that are homeless or looking for work, whatever, vacationing.
The one on top of the hill, she passed away, what, probably twenty years ago.
I haven't seen her. The trailer you talked about down on Proton Road or?
Yep.
Okay, that sort of was, was maybe in that file, was foreclosed on a few years ago, the town had it torn down and someone had just like, I think, then out that one was. I know we did put books on that, yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, that trailer that's there is not the one that's dangerous.
No.
That explains that. That's why that one's off the list.
Right, we paid, we paid to have that one torn down, remember?
Yep.
But it was still on the list as active, so.
Okay, so that's been remedied.
And that's all I had to go by was.
So, have letters been sent to, I mean, I hate to use names, so for map, map one lot twenty, has that person's been sent a letter that the building on his property should be torn down?
Everybody on the list has received at least one letter, if not multiple.
And have you got any?
The dates go all the way back to twenty thirteen. So, they, for some of them.
So, they got letters from you recently?
No, only Gary.
Okay, so this time. That one lot twenty is a work in progress. Every time I drive by it, it's like, let's watch this building go.
But, uh, well then, um, how difficult would it be for you to send them all letters?
My actual recommendation, because some of these have been on, I mean, this list, the newest one is twenty twenty one. And like I said, they've had multiple letters already.
And there's no response from any of them?
No.
In, in all those reach outs?
So, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be have an official letter stating what the next steps are gonna be.
With a deadline?
With a deadline. So, I have.
You or attorney?
I would recommend from the attorney because they've already, these people have already gotten multiple letters from the CEO.
Right, yeah.
Or it be Gary or whoever.
My question is, that line item we have for monitoring the buildings, what is the figure? Only because if we're sending all these letters with final dates with the town threatened action, do we have the money?
No, that's what we do not.
Right.
Because we have to take it, we have to take on possession and then we have to pay for the.
But we have a line.
We have to remediate, I don't know, something like ten thousand dollars.
That's, that's, I'm curious. And then what, what does it cost to take it?
It used to be that you could bill the owner with, after sixty days, they changed the law that now we don't, we have no recourse until it goes into foreclosure and then we get the property back after three years. That's what I understand, that you, the town has to pay for the remediation, correct?
No option.
And the bill goes to the owner, or if you have to demolish it, it goes to the landowner. And then we can't get our money back. We have no way of getting our money back.
Well, we attach the land for the amount.
That's, yeah.
That, then my understanding is that there's usually a lien put on the property.
Yes, there's a lien, but.
Right.
It's not collectible until the three years run out, you know.
I have a question. I know you've given lot numbers, but is one of those, the dilapidated, falling down, really dangerous house on Washington Street, not a bank?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
He has cleaned up a lot of it, just not one of the better ones.
Oh, I know the letters there. I know the letters there as, as a hope, but that's just, I mean.
I mean, everybody who's looking at the one unpleasant thing wanted that one gone and the worst.
It's not even reasonable on a rehab, is it?
It's gone.
It's a tear down.
Yeah, it's gone. It's already gone.
I know, but yeah, but.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, he thinks he has something there.
So, you're suggesting they take, send a letter to the recourse of, with a lawyer is, is a great idea, but we don't have money for the teeth to back it, so we should pick one.
And what does it cost to take down a building?
A, twelve thousand dollars, right?
Is that realistic?
Nineteen three, almost nineteen four.
I've seen him, I've seen the cost. Uh, twenty.
So, realistically, we, we might be able to take down three.
Yes, and so we need to pick those three, not send letters to the other ones.
Where's the fire starter when we need them?
Well, the ones you do tear down, you put a lien on them. I don't know where they'll all at, but if they're sellable lots and the person decides to sell them, they can't get a clean deed to it.
No, they have to pay us back. They try to sell it.
So, at that point, you do.
Yes, you get, if they try to sell it, you get, you won't get the money, but.
And we have some point the town can actually take it.
And all of these are up to date on taxes?
I have no idea. I don't have.
We have to take the property over to demolish it and then it goes back to the.
I understand that, but I'm just wondering on these particular properties, are any of them behind the cages?
We have to know that for the next meeting.
You know, are they one year away or one of these?
What's on foreclosure, what is it?
Out of these, out of this list?
Um, I don't, I haven't seen the list, I don't know.
So, well, how about this one, Nancy? She brings me up.
Yeah, how about, how about next time?
This one?
Because that's all I'm thinking is if we have already like started a process and maybe those are the houses we focus at because we're we're two years, three years. I know some got letters from the attorney. Right, but I'm just wondering if some of these are, are in arrears on taxes? If they're already one or two years, then we're only a year away. So, maybe we concentrate on those ones versus the ones that are not in arrears on taxes, if we're looking at fiscally trying to do this, you know?
Yes, we would start with the ones that are closed.
So, maybe before our, our next.
I just had tax report come up and.
Because then we would own the property after doing, we're doing the upgrades.
Could you look at the one map eight, lot forty-five, it's a picture. Isn't the house. I know the guy's name. And I know which house it is, but that is not the house.
Not eight lot forty-five?
I'm saying that's not the house, but in the picture.
And the house in the picture is not that.
It's not true.
Okay, so.
So, it's the wrong address on that, on that?
I don't know if the address is wrong or.
The picture of the house is wrong or?
Picture of the house is wrong, but that's not a place.
Well, we'll have to check it that way.
That's as close as I could get with the map and lots, it was just past.
Past, past Blanche Lane. This is the first one after Blanche's driveway. And the name, he's the second or third one on the left. This is the first one on the left after.
Okay, so, I think you did a pretty good job getting all the other ones, I mean, after all.
This one's more shady.
There's no numbers, it's kinda hard to figure out.
And so, I guess, I guess my other question was, in looking at the town, are there other houses that you feel should be on this list that are not on this list?
I'm sure there are.
Let's just start with the worst ones right now. Barbara?
I, I just wondered if it's important to separate tax delinquency from code enforcement? Because don't people have certain protections or excuses they can give under tax delinquency and the bucks sort of stops? Well, indignancy and.
Well, what, I, oh, I think you're talking about if they're occupied, they're not occupied. So, I think the.
But if it's, if it's dilapidated and a hazard, does it matter? I mean, I, I think, I really applaud you for doing something about these buildings, not only of the insight, but I just think it's dangerous, teenagers, everything out there.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Raccoons, possums.
And you're gonna tax people for improving. We really have to look at efforts of getting rid of dilapidation, right?
And many, many years ago, there was Wanda, who you remember.
Wanda?
Somebody burned them, burned many, many buildings down and. Yeah, even the good ones.
Well, there is someone we need them.
I understand that we're never prosecuted.
Hi, Eric. I just wanted to ask, is date is probably, what is one of the how you, if there is one with the asbestos, what is it if you're in that case?
What's that?
You have to check it before you tear it down.
Yeah.
You have to go in and see if there's asbestos in there.
You have to have a certified person.
Pretty much related pain. Well, no, you don't.
You don't?
No.
You don't have to have a certified disease?
I've done it for the one on the corner, it went down and certified that there was no asbestos in there.
Although in truth.
And the D piece, that's okay.
The Pentecostal minister down on that little church of what's happening now, you know, down on Lower Water Street or doing our pleasant or whatever it is. Uh, that man burned the entire place down. Asbestos and all.
Wow.
And I don't know why nothing happened to it.
That's the one before, yeah.
So, I guess.
Gina.
Okay.
And how does somebody get a building put on?
I'm gonna make it on, I think, by, the top to the CEO. CEO, there's a look at it and says, it's a problem.
I, well, I've already talked to him today about that.
I think this, this is laughing.
When was the last time somebody lived in that neighborhood?
It is a bad place and I.
It's too close to mine.
Well, it's too close to everyone. Also, it has the audacity to be for sale, you know, that's.
Well, if it's sold, maybe they'll tear it down and you don't have to worry about it. At least it is for sale.
It is really embarrassing.
I don't, I don't wanna burst your bubble, but the people that bought it called me and I told them it's a tear down back then and they paid a lot of money for it. Now we trying to sell it. I told them that.
Well, this one's like a blow down.
So, um, are we doing anything with his suggestion on the signs? Because in his letter, in his letter to us, he's recommended that we look at the simple red and white signs placing on the buildings to show they're dangerous and he gave us a breakdown of the cost. I just don't wanna ignore your work on that.
No, I don't bring that up.
Yeah.
I think we should have the signs.
I think we should have the signs too.
I think that would protect us.
And I think that's a step in the right direction on all of these.
That also kinda marks them.
Yes, and you get twelve, a bad deal for twelve. We need twelve. You can definitely find twelve.
And they're not cheap, the signs, but they're supposed to last for a while.
Is anything cheap?
No, but they're supposed to be signs so they don't stay.
Absolutely.
And honestly, don't live in there.
And these signs are similar, if you've been to Bangor in the last few years, by the hospital, you would've seen the big red hats. That's what those are.
Yeah, no, I think, I think. Well, it's protecting the line though.
Right, and I thought.
It's helping us because if we do go to try to demolish it and there's a sign, people already know that it's unsafe to be there.
Correct, that's what I, you know, I think that's the next.
Well, be sure which one you demolish and I had a friend in Eastport that tore down their own house.
That happens occasionally.
Wow, that's wicked.
Well, that's like.
Well, it's a good thing it was junk too.
Oh, you can't. So, he didn't get paid for that one. I have a story about that. Do you wanna make a motion there?
Well, I'm just gonna make a motion that we continue forward with the idea that the CEO invests and put up the signs and that we look to the treasurer for just a little more information in regards to the tax status on these properties.
And verify the exact location.
I will second that.
All in favor?
What is the motion?
Motion is for him to do the sign.
And for Suzette?
To give us the variance of what level that there are towards foreclosure.
If any of these are in remit, uh, tax.
And anyone, it's, or any of them on the list in foreclosure, like far along in foreclosure, are they? I'm sure they're probably.
Oh, you got the list ready?
No, I.
Oh, you kinda know, okay.
One is, um, twenty-five-nine is the new one every year.
There what?
There's what?
So, are they three years?
They just paid off the third year, so they were on the foreclosure list.
Oh, so they're, okay, okay, so they're two.
We're going from the bottom lot fifteen.
This list is public knowledge. This is in the public record.
But you don't have to say.
Yeah, okay, so the fifteen-two-eighty is, is, they're up to date on tax about, if they're, I've never, I've never seen any of these.
Okay.
Okay.
The sixteen-three-two, I don't know, that name hasn't come across, so I don't think I've ever sent any notices.
Okay.
Um, ten-twenty-three-B is usually on the list. But I spoke to the owner a month or so ago because of the foreclosure list and I thought, they said that a family member was kind of staying in there, so you might wanna check and see if it's even habitable.
There's no way. There's no way.
What's next?
That one, I was just told the other day that the owner is in the process of getting a building, so that would be going away. I don't know when.
Yes, he is.
So, thirty-eight-two, so they're gonna be demolishing their own.
Yeah, so, um, and fifteen-thirty, that always on, that's football joy.
So, they're, so they're two, they pay the third year.
Yeah, they just paid off the foreclosure, so they wouldn't foreclose, about one month ago.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And eight forty-five, that one, I don't know, I've never sent anything.
Well, see, the, the picture's not up that.
That's how to find the people.
It's, it's the other house, Suzette, the one, you, you know what twenty is.
I know the one you're discovering that picture is the neighbor.
Okay.
Yeah, um, one-twenty, I've never sent them anything.
No.
Okay.
So, their taxes are, so their taxes are good?
Yeah, um, eighteen-fifty-two, might be a year. It was a constant, but it's gotten better. Fifteen-two-twenty-six, I didn't understand them anything. And closer to the other one on top, thirty, they've taken down and.
It has changed.
Yes.
So, it looks like we have twenty-five-nine and fifteen-thirty, those two. Oh, is that, is that the, um, cannery?
The red building.
It's the red building.
It's closest to the end.
Well, it's all on the east.
Did you look at the picture? We've already been dealt with one of the, oh.
Right, it's the other end.
It's the whole building though.
It's the other end. Well, what about the actual house, you know, the actual place where you walk in and there's offices, you know?
I think that one building was packed, but that isn't it.
No, they're different owners.
Yeah.
They're two different owners there.
Yeah, you've got.
Well, it's a corporation that owns it, right?
Yeah, so I think Bobby owns the, we're talking about seven thirty street.
He, he owns that himself.
Yeah, yeah. He bought it out.
Well, no, he owns just that.
Oh, the one that's the mess, the one that needs to be torn down?
Yeah, then the next one was.
Okay, and he's two years around? Alright, so.
Is Peacock Canyon or whatever, the office down there, is that on that list?
Is that what we're talking about?
The picture is like in and out and it's.
We're talking about the one next to it? We're talking about the red building next to, where the sign is on.
Yeah, I know, that, one of those. One tax property.
We hope somebody will buy it.
Is it one address, the whole thing?
One tax property, seventy-two block street.
Is that whole building?
I thought the company owned that.
It does. Well, it's just listed in that name probably because that house originally.
Is he owns the strip land now?
But are the lots separated?
No.
But is it just the one building on the end that we're considering are unsafe, or is it the whole building?
The whole building is fine, really, they, it has good bones.
When I was looking, I was going by what the tax maps and just trying to line it up based off of that. And that fell to that one.
That red, red building on the end, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's the red building, if you look at it, you look on the backside, you think it's the building next to that, there's used to be the Seesaw Place.
Right.
That's got the roof that's coming in on the backside.
Yeah.
That's the one that looks dangerous to me, the red building just doesn't have its doors closed.
Well, that's so interesting too, right?
So I think. I'm in the apartment upstairs where I am, when I was a kid.
Oh, one, one suggestion. And I tried to get the town to do it before they tore the big part down.
Yeah.
Get rid of the animals that are living in there before you knock it down, because they're in the neighborhood.
Disaster.
I think when you're.
Go ahead, Ed.
Oh, I'm sure.
These people get a notification and now it's a certified notification or it's a notice from an attorney of this is, we're really gonna do something this time letter. Are you gonna give the people an opportunity to maybe make some corrections on the things that make it?
Sure.
That's always how it starts.
Always get a, a chance, absolutely.
That's like the initial letter that goes out.
But if you think about it, these people already had those letters. More than one occasion over many years.
Yeah, anybody want it?
The teeth lies in the fact that if in fact it's condemned and all the steps gone have gone properly through, then it's up the town, then takes over the property and does the, the proper remediation was destroy, demolishing the building, making it safe, then have to go back to the owner and then unless it's in foreclosure, you'll have to put a lien on it and then we can't collect it till it either goes, either they sell it or it goes into foreclosure.
Or they just pay off the lien. If they have money, they can just pay off the lien, you know?
Well, they can, but it's very different. And it used to be, when we first were on the board, that after sixty days you could bill the owner, I believe that was the rule.
Yeah, it's changed a lot.
And it's changed in the last three, four years, so it's, the money is on the, that we can have a fund.
No, no, I mean to write the letter from the lawyer.
They should have an opportunity to make it more, you know, to make it safe.
Yes. Well, I think in that one case on Water Street, they boarded it up many, many times.
Wants to put a lot of money and time into it.
I'll put it in old business for the next meeting.
They can bring it back. The folks that just paid me years' worth of taxes, the other arrears, we're in danger of really using it this time, we better do something. Maybe, maybe that's it, because they need to actually do something. Now they want it to come up and get rid of the building.
That would be there anyway. Okay, great.
Funny, the thing is, if you have an old building on lot, that actually takes away from what is working.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to sell it, everybody's looking at that old building saying, hey, this thing's gonna cost me ten grand to get rid of.
Whatever, my great grandfather's house and I want to save it, but now I have to do it.
Well, you know, there, one of these buildings may have historic significance. The one on Luke Cove Road was made national news one time, if you people remember, when the guy's uncle died and it was the middle of winter and he found out that he didn't have to bury him and he put him on the front porch.
Oh, I remember reading about that.
It made Tom Broko talk about it.
Everybody said, have enough money to fix that light.
Yes, yes.
But the story was close, it was my buddy.
I think though, when you decide what, what choice building you're gonna go for, that you should look at the building.
I don't think Christmas in April is gonna help.
I think you should.
It'd be time to take the body out.
Um, I think you look for the building that's gonna affect the, the young kids and who, like the ones that are in the public eye, like the one on Water Street would be more important, that one on North Lubeck Road, because kids are more apt to, I believe, have access to, to that building and eye.
We burned one down last year, two years ago, on Lower Water Street.
Nationwide, this is a problem and everybody is going through it.
Well, I think we're going to step in the right direction.
Yes.
We're doing this.
I think we can't make any.
And, and I would, I would just be curious, in your time moving forward, I, I would imagine there's some add-ons, you know, when you, when you look.
I can bring in more add-ons. I just thought that this list was a good start.
Right, but I think that if we're gonna actually start, like we need to have them all, otherwise it's gonna be like, you know, why not that one?
Why didn't you pick them?
Right, and, and not that one.
Well, we may have like a chapter two to this next time.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sign D to release a lien. And that's why we're moving along. So, uh.
You gonna be the witness tomorrow? I'll be the lawyer.
What, 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 did somebody pay something off or somebody buy it?
Then you might go.
So what, what is it?
I got this, we got this fax from the title company, apparently they're buying to sell a piece of land and an old lien hasn't been released from nineteen ninety-five. So they drew up a D and just want the document to sign it.
Well, has it been paid?
I'm, and I hate to use the word, I'm assuming it has, because I looked through the book in ownership and I didn't see, I didn't see it in the title of that's name, um, followed it.
How much was it for?
I can't remember, I had to go back through the paper books, it's not on our records in the tree.
Wow. Right? This says twenty, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Is that the lien?
No, that's what they, that's the transfer tax, that's what they paid for the property.
Well, if you can't find where they owe us anything, I guess we have no, we can't really collect, I mean, it's before your time, right?
Yeah, it's before, and we don't have records after six, seven years.
And the taxes are current now, so.
The taxes have been current for years, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion, resign that quickly.
Yeah, oh, second.
All in favor? So this will need to be witnessed. Make sure you put adjacent, conditions. You want whatever it said there. Oh, so that's that it?
No, I got, um.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I messed up the other businesses ahead of one other item, but, um, down at the Marina Building, the fence that is around it is in very rushed shape.
Pretty much collapsed.
Yeah, it needs to be replaced.
It's a state of the issue.
Yeah, I met with, I actually, I went over to Hammond's, they don't deal with paying lien at all. They suggested Allen and everybody seems to have heard of Allen, firearm fence company,